Right. We know nothing. Well, I had a call today on the Boundary Commission.
Oh, they called it. Oh, one of the commissioners.
Yeah.
Got it.
About Manchester.
I wrote that report on Paul's perspective. They are extremely, extremely concerned.
Give him a champagne.
Oh, yeah.
Give him, because there are many. Exactly. He's coming back.
He's extremely, you know, in extreme opposition.
Yeah. There's a lot of money going out the door. The money grab.
Mr. Hilsinger, I have seven o'clock.
All right, we'll go ahead and start. I'd like to welcome you to the Singelus County Planning Commission Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations or petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hilsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I'd like to introduce on my right Jacob Trimble, Acting Director of Planning, and to my far left, partners, the planners assigned to tonight's petition. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker attendance card indicating the petition you were here for. If you speak, please give your card to me as you approach the podium. If you do not wish to speak, please put your card on the cart at the exit to the chambers. By filling out a card, we'll be able to link you to a copy of the Commission's report when it goes to the County Council. Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petitions at the next executive meeting on January ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within one week of this meeting will be distributed to the planning commissioners at their executive meeting agenda packet. Written comments can be sent email to planning@singeluscounty/mo.gov. And additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The planning commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. This meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning staff will introduce the petition and show photos of the site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allotted fifteen minutes. Then persons in favor of the request will speak. After that, persons in opposition or with concern. Persons representing groups will be allowed five minutes. Person speaking as an individual will be allowed two minutes. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, the petitioner will be allowed five minutes to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After each petition is heard tonight, we will ask for a show of hands of those in favor and those in opposition or with concern. This is not a vote, and it's not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear tonight's first item, which is thirty-seven dash twenty-two, Needy Paws Rescue.
Good evening. PC thirty-seven dash twenty-two, Needy Paws Rescue is a request for a conditional use permit in the C two shopping district for a tract of zero point one six acres located on the northeast quadrant of Gravoy Road and Matilda Avenue. As you can see, this look site is located in South County, and the site is outlined in red. From the land use map, as you can see, Gravoy is mainly a commercial frontage with single-family homes behind that commercial frontage. There are still some multifamily and single-family residential homes along Gravoy, but there are very few and fleeting. This is a larger aerial of the site outlined in red, just showing those commercial uses along Gravoy Road. This is looking north on the site, looking at the Planning Commission Public Hearing Notice. This is looking north at the site in particular. This is looking north. This is along the eastern property line of the property. This is looking south across Gravoy. This is looking southeast along Gravoy. This is looking east down Gravoy. This is at the intersection of Gravoy and Matilda Avenue, looking south. This is looking north up Matilda Avenue. This is looking west along Gravoy. This is looking east on the western side of the property. This is looking north again up Matilda Avenue. This is looking northeast, crossing through the backyard of the property. This is looking east on that property line with their neighbor behind them. And then we'll let the petitioner speak.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so what we wanted to use this building for is mainly-
Excuse me, would you state your name for the record, please?
Sorry, my name's Laura Pappas, and I'm the owner of Needy Paws Rescue. So, we want, what we want to use this building for is for administration, to have meetings for training purposes, and also as a holding place, because we have been in business since two thousand fourteen. We've adopted out over six thousand dogs. And now we're finding that some of these dogs are coming back, and the owners are wanting to return them to us. And in our contract, we say that we will always take our dog back. So the problem is, now we're getting like too many at one time, and we've been having to put them in boarding facilities, which is really costing us a lot of money. And so if we had, if we could use this building for some of these dogs, until we can get them into foster homes or get them adopted, which we do a really good job of, that's really what we want it for. So, let's see. So, I've been fostering dogs for over twenty years, started out with Stray Rescue of Missouri or of St. Louis. We're a nonprofit, and we rescue an average of about seven hundred dogs a year. This year's been a little slower, it's only going to be a little over five hundred. And most of our money comes from donations. We don't really get, the adoption fees don't usually cover the cost of the dog, getting vetted, spayed, whatever. So, in fact, our building on Gravoy, we were able to purchase that because of a trust. One of my friends actually died from cancer and left us a nice chunk of money. So, I kind of went over all this. All of our dogs are in foster homes, we do not have a shelter, and we do not want a shelter. So this building is not going to be a shelter. We want to keep our status as having dogs in foster homes. And I already said that we take back our dogs. Let's see. So, again, the proposal is just to hold, it's gonna be a holding facility. So maybe we don't have any dog owner returns at that time, but maybe we want to bring in dogs that are gonna go to a foster home. So maybe we want to bring them there, hold them a couple of days until we can get them vetted, and then they can move to a foster home. So, there might be times when we don't have many dogs there at all. Once we do, or if we're allowed to have dogs there, we will have volunteers come over there, hopefully five times a day. The dogs will not be left alone outside. They will only be outside if somebody is there letting them out and staying with them until they come back in. So, it could be, you know, they might only be outside for fifteen minutes. If it's a nice day, maybe a half hour, but, you know, we have to rely on our fosters to stay there for that long to let the dogs out. We just had a private six-foot white vinyl privacy fence put up, so hopefully that would help with any kind of noise, if there was any noise. But I've had a lot of dogs at my house, unfortunately, at one time, and they're always quiet at nighttime. They don't bark unbelievably, but they don't. So, I don't think the barking will be an issue, because like I said, if they would happen to start barking, they're coming back inside. So, that's that part. This is what the backyard looks like right now. Sometimes we have to do separation, so sometimes a dog may only be out there by itself. So it's, it's not gonna make too much noise unless maybe somebody's walking down the street with a dog. But they're not gonna be able to see through the fence, so that's gonna help also with any kind of potential barking. And then that's the side of our building with the fence. And basically, we have our platinum, platinum transparency seal, so, I mean, we, we have a really good reputation, and we want to keep that reputation. We are known for our compassion for our dogs. We want to be a good neighbor, so, you know, if there's any problems, we would want to be told, and we would fix it however we can. We, we are not going to be a doggy daycare, so again, it's just a place to hold some of these dogs if we get too many owner returns, and so that we don't have to pay to put them in boarding, you know. And I had like twelve owner returns almost at one time, and I had to put some of them in the boarding facility. They all got adopted. So, yay. Anyway, that's basically it. Yep, that's it.
Okay, questions? Anyone?
Could I ask a question, Mr. Hilsinger?
Absolutely.
Are there any, do you have a business vehicle, or are there any vehicles you use?
We do have a van. It's, right now, it's parked at my house, so I don't know if I'm gonna park it there or not. It won't fit in the garage, so if I do park it there, it'll be in the driveway.
Thank you.
And Mr. Hilsinger, may I ask a couple of questions? So will there be twenty-four hour, will there be an individual here twenty-four hours, or will the dog, will there be dogs left overnight in, in the, in the structure?
There, they will be left overnight. There might be nights when somebody spends the night, especially if the weather gets bad. But we have, we're gonna have security cameras, and so we have people that live close to that vicinity, so even something happened, we can be there, I can be there in ten minutes.
Sure. And besides this use, are you, you mentioned there will be administrative office. Will there be individuals there on a seven, you know, seven days a week doing administration, or could you speak to that a little bit?
Truthfully, I don't know if somebody will be there every day of the week. I think a lot of it will be people coming and going, our volunteers. We can open the garage remotely, and they can go in and get supplies. And hopefully while they're there, they can let the dog out, and then... So, yeah, no, I don't, I don't foresee anybody being there seven days a week. They'll be there off and on.
Okay, thank you so much.
I have a question on the gap that it showed from the bottom of the fence. Is there anything, could a dog possibly squeeze through that, or you gonna have something?
Leslie, I'm, they're addressing that, aren't they? Sorry.
Go ahead, you state your name for the record.
My name's Leslie Drohl, I'm overseeing some of the improvements. And so, yes, we have, it's a ten-inch-deep barrier. It's like a comb that goes into the ground, so it'll go into the ground. So any of those gaps that you saw on the fence will be eliminated. So there will not be any digging out or anything. And if for some reason a dog does, we will, of course, fix it immediately.
Any signage?
No.
Okay.
We don't want a signage, because we don't want people dropping off dogs there. We, you know, we don't want to advertise that we're there, basically.
Okay, anyone else?
Will there be any more lighting put in the backyard?
We've already putting some light in.
I mean, there were-
And where the dogs would be outside.
Right, right, so there are light fixtures on the back part of the house that have not probably been used, that we had broken lamps. So there are two floodlights on the back of the house. We probably will not add any more lighting at this time.
Thank you.
Anyone? Seeing none, we thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, is there anyone representing a group or an individual who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone representing a group in favor? Okay, come on down. Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to add, my name is Cynthia Anderson. I'm a lifelong Afton resident. I've lived in the house I've grown up in. I moved away for a couple of years, and I moved back. I've been there for over fifty years. I live two minutes away from this location. I'm also a Needy Paws foster. I fostered for them for, pretty much since the beginning, about eight years now. I've never met a more professional, well-organized, highly-rated, highly-respected rescue in the St. Louis community. There, as you may know, there are many rescue organizations in St. Louis. Some are much better than others. Needy Paws is among the top of them. I fully support this. I think it will be a great asset for the rescue. I know that the dogs will be taken care of. I know that any issues that may arise will be taken care of promptly. I know they want to maintain their reputation. And again, I live close to two minutes away, so I am available should any emergencies arise or anything, and they need someone there quickly. I will be available to assist as needed. So I just wanted to state my support for this petition.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Any questions?
Nope, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, is anyone representing a group or individual who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Want to come on down?
Hi, my name's John Winter, and I live at the property on the backside of the fence here with my fiance, Victoria Mitchell. And we'd like to speak in opposition to this overnight dog boarding facility going in. They have put up this fence already, and it is eight feet from our bedroom to where this dog housing facility will be at. And so we're concerned about noise and decreasing the value of our homes and the homes around it. And, and since they mentioned fixing floodlights that will be facing into the backyard now, floodlights that will be going into our, our bedroom windows at nighttime now.
Okay.
So, yes, we'd like to say we're in opposition to it, and that's all we have.
Appreciate your comments, thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing no one, would you like to add anything?
...the floodlights due to the height-
Go ahead, speak in the microphone.
Again, Leslie Drohl. With the floodlights, the height of the fence will allow the floodlights to go over that fence. It'll be kept down, plus, most of the time, the last out, if we were going to have dogs in the facility, would probably be about eight-thirty, no later. So typically, most adults are awake still at that time. It wouldn't be past the, you know, typically ten, nine-thirty, ten o'clock is the do-not-disturb times and quiet time. So we are not going to be there at late hours. It should not be a just truly a disturbance. And so the floodlights, if they're on, will be on for short periods of time. And as I said, they're lower than the fence height.
Okay, all right, appreciate it. And with that, we'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. Those in favor? Let the record show twelve, those opposed are with concern. Let the record show two. And that concludes this hearing, thank you. And we will go to the next item, which is PC thirty-eight dash twenty-two, Ameren.
Good evening. PC thirty-eight dash twenty-two, Ameren, Tesson Ferry, is a request for an amended MXD for a point-six acre tract on the west side of Tesson Ferry Road, east side of Keller Road, and the northwest side of Brittonger Road. This site is in South County, and you can see the area highlighted in red on the aerial. As you can see, this site is in the southern portion of the Tesson Ridge development. Here's the land use map, where you can see some of the existing commercial development along Tesson Ferry Road, including multifamily residential north of this site, and then single-family residential development surrounding. You can see some of that development on the larger aerial. You can also see within the highlighted area, an Ameren substation, which has existed at this site since the nineteen eighties. And the only thing before the commission this evening is the telecommunications tower. The substation is not in question. This is looking south on the site at the public hearing sign. Oh. Great, this is looking southwest. This is looking east toward Tesson Ferry Road. This is looking northeast at Brittonger Road. Looking north into the site. Looking west at the substation. Again, looking west. Looking south. This is looking south down Brittonger Road. This is kind of at the entrance of Brittonger Road. So on the left is development on Tesson Ferry, and to the right is the existing multifamily development. This is if you just turned around and looked west toward the Tesson Gardens Court. This is looking north still from Brittonger Road. And this is looking northeast from Brittonger Road toward Tesson Ferry Road. And at this time, we'll have the petitioner's presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Russell Bean. My address is three four zero Marshall Road, Valley Park, Missouri, six three zero eight eight. I am here tonight representing Ameren, UE, Ameren, Missouri. And if you would, wouldn't mind giving me a few minutes. This is probably one of eight visits we're gonna have together, so I'd like to give you a little background on the project. Ameren has been given funding to complete their, their own wireless telecommunications network. This is an FCC licensed network. The purpose of this network is for multiple functions. One, for their own phone-to-phone communications, for monitoring their substations, monitoring their transformers, monitoring individual power facilities, and also for meter, their, their new meter reading system. I know a lot of people have just had their meters switched out. I know both my house and my office have been switched out. Currently, Ameren is utilizing the different telecommunications companies, Verizon, AT&amp;T, Spectrum, and T-Mobile, to do all these functions. This, this system will allow them to save millions of dollars in cost of utilizing outside sources to, to do all these, all these different functions. They are building throughout their, Ameren, Missouri, they're building throughout the entire breadth of their, of their system. We are building approximately forty-two towers throughout Missouri. Obviously, where there's more population, they'll be a little closer together. We are asking for this tower, and let me preface this by saying that one of the, one of the conditions of funding is that we utilize Ameren-owned properties where, wherever possible, only in the very rarest occasions would they look at property that is not owned by Ameren, and in that case, they would try to acquire that property by purchase. This property is located on Tess, Tesson Ferry Road, just south of the QT. I'm sure you're all familiar with the development. I know it was, was here for quite a bit. To the southeast corner of that property, there is an Ameren substation located within, within an Ameren easement. We are proposing to locate the tower within the Ameren easement. We would be located in the, and I'll show you on the aerial when we get there. There's, this is a pretty wooded area. We would be located within that wooded area adjacent to the substation. That's just a large area. This would be within our, our compound was located our tower and Ameren's radio equipment. We are proposing at this location a hundred and forty-foot tower. This would be a regular monopole-style wireless telecommunications tower. It would have at the top what has always been referred to at these hearings as the candelabra-style mounts at the top that would contain Ameren's antennas. As you can see, it's located again at the, the south end, southeast end of that development, right behind the commercial property there. It's another aerial view of the substation. These are, are much different than the pictures that you've already been shown. This is a view from Tesson Ferry of the location that the tower will be located in. And we do have our, we do meet FAA. We are governed under the Missouri Wireless Communications Infrastructure Deployment Act and the Telecommunication Act of nineteen ninety-six. And that is the end of my presentation. Again, this is just one of eight towers we'll be requesting from St. Louis County. We meet the conditions of the telecommunications- We meet the conditions of the telecommunications, St. Louis County telecommunications ordinance. We will be requesting a variance due to the location and the size of the Ameren easement. We do not meet the setbacks as required. But other than that, all the other conditions we've met and will agree to any conditions that are reasonable as requested by the planning commission. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, anyone? They're the sole user.
That's correct. Time is precious. Truth is more precious than time was on a fortune cookie I got first day I worked in this industry 23 years ago. Currently, their plan is to keep this solely Ameren. The real estate group is pushing to allow for co-location. That's down the road if it should be an attractive thing for Ameren. But currently, their plan is to keep these towers solely for the Ameren's use. However, that might change in the future.
Anyone else? What's the total cost of the project?
I don't have that information. This tower in itself would weigh about $300,000.
Okay. Well, it's going through my mind when I'm sitting here, I'm wondering, this might be far-fetched, but is this going to have an impact on Ameren asking for a rate increase to cover any of this work?
Now, that's been a question. They have the funding for this project. Whether or not it's going to affect future rates, I can't say.
The reason I ask is a similar thing happened with another utility that I'm familiar with. And all of a sudden, our bills doubled.
Yes.
And they had the money to go ahead and do it too, and they just chose not to.
And the, I can tell you, the purpose of this project is to save the cost of, that they're paying out to these private companies. But, you know, Ameren's Ameren, and there are so many. I'll tell you, when we go out and we do these sidewalks, we have 16 different departments that come along to say, you can do this, you can go here, you can do that. That's there, that's there. And the people that we are working with are telling us that this is to save the approximate, I want to say, they said $1.2 million a month they spend on their telecommunications costs to save that. I think the idea would be to stave off a rate increase. But I can't tell you that in what, you know, it is a private, publicly traded company, so.
Well, saving them money and saving the consumer money are two opposite ideas.
But I understand what you're asking, and I can tell you what they've told us, is that the purpose of this project is to save that money. And hopefully, to save costs in Ameren, which would then stave off a future, or not stave off, but further out that request that they would need to, need a rate increase.
And this would work like any other cell tower?
That's correct. That's correct. It's in the 800 megahertz band, which is the same as, well, actually, all three of the current carriers all work, operate under the 800 megahertz. It's the same technology. It's a LTE network. They'll operate their phones and then the various, you know, you pass by a transformer, and you see on top of the transformer, there's a little antenna about that big. That's connected to a phone modem, and it works just like a cellphone network would.
Okay. Anyone else? Question is, Dan. The Tesson Ridge site there, how close are the lots to this site right here, the single-family?
If, to the new proposed single-family lots? Russ, would you mind going back to one of your aerials?
Sure.
So on this one, you see the end of the lake, and then you can kind of see that footpath coming down from the end of that existing lake. The single-family homes would extend, I think, a bit farther east than if the lake came straight down. So it would still be probably 500 feet from this proposed tower location. But we can look certainly before, we can measure that out.
The staff report, we will definitely address that.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, we thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. At this time, is anyone representing a group or individual who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone representing a group or an individual who'd like to speak in opposition? Come on up. Thank you.
So I don't have any images for the overhead.
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
So I'm Christine Horton, and I'm a resident of Bauer Road, not far from this site. I don't have overhead photographs, but I do have some copies here of photographs from the area, which I'd like to introduce to you.
Okay.
And Mr. Trimble, I'd like to thank you for your email that I received earlier about this. I actually went out to this site today. It's, I've had an adventure going there, down a little gravel lane. One of the things that's very, very observable from the area of the QuickTrip garage, which obviously is easy to pull up there, is there are actually several cellphone tower sites immediately around there. In fact, if you look at photo number one, that is directly opposite the QuickTrip garage at the junction of Tesson Ferry and Griffin. Picture number two is taken, again, just from the same location, but just slightly looking to the other direction. That is one that is to, I don't know which side it would be, but to one side of the South County Antique Mall. And I would say that that's probably about 300 yards-ish or so. The other one's probably 150, 200 yards. There's also what we in the local area call the mystery pole, which is at the junction of Sisson Ferry Hills and Tesson Ferry Road, a little bit further away, probably three quarters of a mile away. That one is, there's no dishes on that tower yet. It is indicated that it is a cellphone tower, but there's just danger, keep away, don't go near it, signs around it. So my question is, why is this actually necessary? The height of the tower is described as 140 feet, which is considerably higher than the existing towers there. Also, if it is 140 feet, one of the things that I observed, actually going out to this site earlier today, is there is an office building with a car park immediately to one side of that. And one of the things I would ask is, is that building within 140-foot fall zone should we ever encounter an earthquake? Because we live on the New Madrid Fault Line. The other thing which was slightly covered was the use of additional telecommunications networks going up on that. So previously, we found that some of these cellphone, or these towers, generate a huge amount of ground rent. That's not appropriate here. But doing, create a lot of revenue streams for the tower owners. So I would like to put that in as an opposition. In addition to that, Mr. Trimble did mention that this is about the cell tower tonight. But I would like to introduce, if it's appropriate tonight, a petition of more than 200 signatories from the Bauer Road area. Some of my neighbors have been contacted about a proposal to run high-voltage transmission lines up the length of Bauer Road. We didn't know whether it was for this substation. There are power lines going to this substation. The purpose of this invasion of the neighborhood with high voltage lines is to supply a new substation at Schusler Road Substation. So this brings in an interesting quandary for us, because of course, Schusler Road is part of Sunset Hills, and we know how difficult their planning system can be. So clearly, Ameren are not looking at running high-voltage transmission lines with their inherent damage to property values, increased easement requirements, health considerations, et cetera. Up Schusler Road, they want to bring them up Bauer Road. And we are respectfully asking that, should this be raised at a future meeting, that you say no to Ameren running high-voltage transmission lines up Bauer Road. As I said, I have over 200 signatories, which have been got in very short order for this meeting this evening, to ask you to say no to Ameren. They wish to run power lines up Tesson Ferry Road. That's one thing, but.
The only thing we're looking at tonight is a 140-foot tower.
Yes.
Nothing else.
Yeah. Would I be able to introduce these signatures this evening?
Absolutely.
Okay. So if I can bring those up to you?
Yep.
Okay. There's a cover, cover letter here. Which way is it? Sorry, it's always the way, isn't it? Multiple pieces of paper. There's a cover letter here, and.
Thank you so much.
Thank you once again for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak in opposition or with concern?
Good evening, panel. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Joyce Martin. I am also a former Ameren engineer. I did a lot of studying on EMF radiations and the damages from lines, high-power lines, microwave towers, and all this in my previous job. And the thought of all of this is just terrifying to me, I will tell you. But Mr. Bean, I believe his name is, he said that they have funding. Ameren has already received funding, but they're required to utilize Ameren-owned properties to get that funding. But he didn't say where the funding is coming from. Also, he hasn't made the connection between that cellphone tower that they want to put up. And I called these, the people who are going to construct it, named Selective Solutions. She told me the tower is proposed to be 146 feet tall. They do plan to have other carriers on the tower eventually. And so it would be a revenue stream for Ameren at the expense of extreme radiation to the homes that are going to be built there, the people in that area already, the businesses, people working in those businesses, the Melville Fire Department, which is right real close to that. So the firemen will be exposed to that. And if you're by a cellphone tower, you are being radiated 24 hours a day. And to me, it's just terrifying. I am an engineer, and I did a lot of studying on this. Anyway. And as far as if they're asking for a variance because their setbacks are not being met, then I would look at that very closely, because the reason the setbacks are not being met is because of, they're probably impeding someone else's property. I don't know. He didn't elaborate on what that really means. There's a lot of missing links here. The connection between that and what they're trying to do on Bauer Road, and I live on Bauer Road, been there 26 years. And if this goes through, if they get through, if they put these poles out there, I mean, I bought this when I was in my 40s, this house, I will have to move. Because there are some people who are actually allergic to EMF radiation, and they're talking about tripling, immediately tripling the voltage coming down Bauer Road on these 50-foot poles. And we are in unincorporated St. Louis County. Schusler Road, where they're proposing that substation for an addition to Mercy Hospital, that's in Sunset Hills. So I don't, I asked them when they approached me. I said, why aren't you building it on Schusler? Why are you wanting to put these poles on Bauer? But now today, Christine and I, I think we figured it out, because they would have to go to Sunset Hills to get approval rather than unincorporated St. Louis County. So I think it's imperative that St. Louis County look at not just the immediate cell tower, but all the other configurations that are going to be part of this big project, and what they are, and where's this funding coming from? And what are they really proposing? What's the big plan? Because part of my job at Ameren was quality management, to develop a configuration management plan for the engineers to follow whenever they did any kind of new project or change in plant equipment or anything at the plants. So, but you can't just say, well, we're just going to put a tower here. What else? There is a big plan here, but there, I don't see it. It's not here. What is the plan? Where's the rest of the plan? What about the substation that they're talking about on Schusler Road? What, I mean, the man who came out there and cut down my trees in front of my house, he said, well, we're going to be putting in 50-foot poles. And I said, no, you're not, not on my property. So they sent me a letter, and if you'd allow me, I'd like to present this to you, offering me $1,500 for an additional nine-foot easement across the front of my property. And I called this man, Mr. Thog Martin, Morton or whatever his name is, on this letter. And he said, if you want to, he says, you want to continue to get electricity? Your neighbors are already agreeing to this. Well, that's not true, because we have over 200 signatures from the people in our neighborhood and down Bauer Road. So, and my neighbor next door, he already took their money for this. And I don't know, I mean, I've already talked to him, but he also signed the petition against it afterwards. So there's a catch-22 there too. I mean, there's a contradiction there. So there's a lot going on here that's not meeting the eye. And I would ask the panel, please investigate this thoroughly, thoroughly. This tower, there are two towers that you can just see standing right there where they're proposing their new tower. There's one there, and there's one right there, across the street on Tesson Ferry Road. So they didn't rather than run space, they want to bring more EMF radiation, more dangerous microwave radiation into the whole vicinity that's not needed. I mean, we need to protect ourselves, our families, our children, our health, our property values, everything, from this invasion. Because at what point do we say enough's enough? We have all these satellites in outer space, that's another thing. And every one of them is transmitting 24 hours a day, right? They're, so we're connecting their tower with these satellites that's bringing more radiation from that. I mean, it's just, it's so scary to me, I can't even tell you. So.
I can tell you, department will do a thorough.
Thank you.
Investigation of, because that's what they do.
Thank you.
I can also tell you, the Missouri legislature severely handicapped when it comes to towers, what we can say yes to and what we can say no to.
Thank you. I appreciate that. You have no idea. Thank you. It's very, it's very important. I mean, it's just important for everybody. So I think Ameren needs to present their full plan rather than just one little part of their plan, because I was told they were going to send letters to everybody on Bauer Road. They never did that. I called the engineer at Ameren and asked him to, he wouldn't return my calls. And I mean, it's just been, it's been going on for almost a year now. It's a disaster. So.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to give this to you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing none, would you like to come back up?
Thank you. Just to clarify, we are Selective Solutions. And Susan, in my office, did have a conversation regarding this proposed tower. I would just like to ask that, we're here, we are here talking about the tower. That's all we know about, the easement and the high-tension power lines going up Bauer Road. We have no idea about. I would like just to, I mean, you mentioned it, but if I don't say it, I'm not doing my job. Prohibited acts by authority, considering. Prohibited acts by authority considering other available colocation spots is prohibited. And then on the Telecommunication Act of Section 704, 1996, as long as we're operating within the guidelines by the FCC, we're FCC licensed network, radio frequency shouldn't can't be considered. And that's all I'd like to add. I know you guys know that, but I-
Not one of our favorite pieces of legislation.
It is not. It is not. And I know the, the new Missouri Siding Act is not terribly popular either. In fact, I thought it was going to put me out of a job because it really did restrict what people could say no and yes to. But I would ask that you keep those in mind as we move forward. And if, if anyone from the planning department needs more information about things that were discussed tonight, we'd be happy to provide them. My applause to the, we're, we're now working with about 30 different municipalities on this project and the St. Louis County Planning Department is one of, if not the most educated on all things power grid, all things cell towers, all things easements and the what is and what isn't allowed via Ameren's rights with the state legislature. Actually, they actually educated some of the folks at Ameren as to what is, what is not allowed in, via the laws of the county and the, and the state. So you really do have a good group there.
Thank you.
And like I said, we'll, we'd be more than happy to discuss with them if there's any other questions. And we can, and I'll send in a, a matrix of all the locations of the system. So we are too, for this project going to be in front of Sunset Hills. So we're familiar with what goes on with Sunset Hills as well. So that's it. If anybody else, any further questions?
Questions, anyone? I have a comment. Just to, you know, Section 704, the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996. Okay, I get that. And I get that this commission is a necessary evil that you have to come through to get to the next phase, but there has to be some kind of accountability, some kind of thought process in dealing with the residents and not just saying, I got Section 704 here, it's going to happen. That, that just strikes me as being wrong. I'm sorry that-
And that's, and, and that's why in the first part of my comments, I didn't, because I don't like to throw that up there. I mean, there, there was a lot of thought put into where these went. There were, there were spots that were in the middle of subdivisions that they have substations there. And we're like, no, let's move, let's move away from those areas. This is a large portion, this large parcel of property. And we're over 280 feet from the closest existing residence and we're over 500 feet from the existing planned residence. And there's a substation further down Tesson Ferry that sits basically in the middle of the subdivision. And we moved them away from there because i- i- in the beginning of this project, it's stick them wherever, we're Ameren, we don't care. That's my words, not theirs. But we worked with them to say, hey, let's be better neighbors and let's find where we have more space around. And I think when we bring the next seven that are proposed, you're going to see how, how we really work to move away from existing residences and move to areas that are more commercial, more industrial, more heavily wooded. There, there was thoughts put into this and we just didn't say, you know what, Section 704 clears the way for us. That, that wasn't the thought that went into this process.
Is there any truth to the fact that other carriers might use this?
There, there's a good possibility they might. As they mentioned, there's existing towers right across the street. All three of the existing carriers are on that existing pole. So this tower in particular probably won't get additional carriers because they're already covering that area on that existing pole.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. Those in favor, let the record show two. Those opposed are with concern. What do you got, eight? Let the record show eight. And that concludes this hearing. And we will go to the next item, which is PC 39-22, San Luis County Planning Commission.
Good evening. Mel Wilson, Land Use Manager, 41 South Central Clayton, Missouri, 63105. So this is PC 3922, St. Louis County Planning Commission, a request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to regulations for marijuana facilities. The commission may recall of, at its executive meeting last week, adopting a resolution to hold this public hearing. So for purposes of review, the commission may be aware that the voters of Missouri passed Constitutional Amendment Three, which enshrines in the state constitution, the right to marijuana for adult use for adults 21 years and, and over. It also enacts a 6% sales tax on adult use marijuana sales. There is an existing 4% tax on medical marijuana sales in the state of Missouri. And then the legislation does allow localities to legislate to, to add a 3% local sales tax on top of that. As with medical marijuana facilities, the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services is the entity that will regulate and facilitate the implementation of these uses. And the legislation makes it clear that local governments, local jurisdictions cannot prohibit the uses outright, nor can we make it unduly burdensome for the facilities to be sited in St. Louis County. So the commission may recall going through this process in 2019 regarding medical marijuana facilities. The state did introduce some new regulations pertaining to what they call comprehensive facilities, which are a facility that can conduct medical marijuana operations as well as adult use. So the term comprehensive encompasses medical and adult use marijuana, but in what you'll see from the, from the planning department, we will mostly refer to them as just marijuana facilities. So right now, the state is accepting applications from existing medical marijuana dispensaries to convert to comprehensive facilities. So starting on the eighth, they began accepting these applications and they've indicated they have 60 days to review and approve those applications. So that is only for existing medical marijuana facilities. At this time, they are not accepting any new applications for new medical facilities, new comprehensive facilities, only conversion applications. So there are the existing definitions of medical facilities. The state has essentially written revised definitions to encompass both facility types. So you can see here on the screen, the definitions of the, the four facility types that we have in the zoning ordinance already. Cultivation, where the marijuana is grown, the dispensary where it is sold, the manufacturing facility where after it's grown, it is transformed into the products, and then the testing facility. So all marijuana in the state of Missouri does have to be tested and certified by a licensed testing facility. And then there are also what they call transportation facilities. So these are essentially the middlemen who move the products from one facility type to another. So this map shows the existing medical marijuana facilities that were approved by the state to operate in unincorporated St. Louis County. So you see, we have a couple of transportation facilities, a cult, one cultivation facility, one manufacturing facility, and then a handful of medical marijuana dispensaries. You can see that most of them are located in the sixth district, but there is some, some dispersion. In the Constitutional Amendment and the resulting rules from DHSS, the state has introduced a new facility type, the micro business marijuana facility. This is essentially a scaled down facility type aimed to allow smaller entities or disadvantaged, disadvantaged operators so they can get into the business. So for instance, this could be a group that has a low network worth or a group where the operator is a veteran with a combat service connected disability. So there are two types. There's a marijuana micro business dispensary, and then there's a micro business wholesale facility, which is sort of a combination cultivation and manufacturing facility type specific for the micro business. So they have a lower number of, of plants that they can grow in the facility. So this is a timeline that the state put out in terms of the process. So as I mentioned, the, this was effective November, the, the eighth was the day of the vote. Marijuana became legal in the state of Missouri on December 8th, and the state began accepting applications. So the first legal marijuana sold in Missouri would, would be at earliest February 6th, 2023. After that, the state has indicated they will begin accepting applications for consumers to be able to, to grow marijuana for personal use at their homes. And they will also put out the rules for those micro business marijuana facilities. They have not yet put out dates for when they would accept new comprehensive facility Are there any questions?
Anyone? No?
All right. So that, that's all I have for now, for public comment then.
Okay. We'll see if we get any public comment. Is anyone like to speak in favor of this petition?
How are you guys?
Good.
My name's Megan Glaser. I'm the Senior Director of Sales and Marketing for Belief Medical. And this is Bob Miller. He is the CFO for Belief Medical. So just wanted to speak a little bit about our company this evening and what we're doing for the community in St. Louis. So we're currently employing about 150 employees. We have three cultivation licenses. You saw one of those up there. We also have two manufacturing licenses. We have two transportation licenses and we have five dispensary licenses in the state of Missouri. A few of them are in St. Louis County. So we're currently employing about 150 people. With this passing, we will grow our team by about 85 new opportunities for people in the St. Louis area. We are an active member of the community. We are, we have a, an initiative called Belief in Equity, where we're showing a lot of initiative for supporting black and brown businesses in the city and the county. And we are working with the St. Louis Community College on donation of equipment and educational programs for those students who are looking to learn about cannabis, as well as supporting the St. Louis University Cannabis Certificate Program. We have a Director of Compliance at our company who was not able to join us this evening, but his sole responsibility is to keep our company within the guidelines of the DHSS and all the many things that come with that, with operating with this many licenses within the state. We have in 2000, in 2022, we've donated about $50,000 worth of charitable donations in state. And with this rec bill passing, we are looking to triple that in 2023. Bob, did I miss anything?
Bob Miller, CFO, Belief Medical. I just want to add, you know, we, we operate under strict guidelines from DHSS and that will not change with the migration to comprehensive usage. Just for an example, there, all owners of the company, all employees undergo strict background checks, cannot be involved in cannabis unless you pass that by the state of Missouri. And we don't see that changing at all. And the third party testing, I want to add to that, that you have two markets. You have the, the retail market and you also have an illicit market that exists out there. And with third party testing, all products sold in the retail market under cannabis is tested before it's allowed for sale. That does not exist in, in the illicit market. So there are health and safety reasons for passage of the bill and, and the reason we support it fully. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you guys tonight.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jamie Mansfield and I'm an attorney with Armstrong Teasdale, along with my partner, Eric Walther, who couldn't be here tonight. We represent a number of Missouri medical marijuana license holders, as well as third party management companies that are in this space that operate on a national level, but also came into this market. We've had the privilege with working with Mr. Trimble and Ms. Wilson's team in 2019 with respect to the opening of the medical marijuana facilities and their predecessor, Gail. All of that was a, a great experience. And I can speak into really what happened during that time with respect to the application process on behalf of the licensees, older holders, and with respect to the operations, the experience, the amount of money and protocol that went into building out these facilities with respect to cultivation, manufacturing, dispensing at that level. They were awarded licenses and after that, they went through, and I think the belief team alluded to this, with commencement inspections with DHSS, which is absolutely no small feat and created sometimes even multiple times DHSS coming out there to ensure compliance. But what was really interesting, what I wanted to tell you with, with how competitive this market was, is that oftentimes these guys received licenses from DHSS because they promised things that were over and above what was written into the code and rules at that level back in 2019. And many of my clients did just that, but DHSS came in and said, not only do we want to make sure that you're meeting the bar that DHSS set there, but if you said you were going to exceed it, we're not going to let you commence operations until you say exactly what you were going to do in that application. So that's just another thing and another standard of what I think that you guys have in these licensees that we're in with jurisdiction. And what we're here tonight to state is that nothing's changing with respect to the comprehension, our comprehensive license. Again, you have a competitive market with experience, top of the line facilities, safety measures, millions of dollars in improvements, countless jobs, all within those stringent standards of DHSS and above. There are annual renewal processes and again, more inspections by DHSS. None of that will change and that will still occur. Again, they spoke to the employees at the state that are vetted, background checked and facility compliance. What's interesting and what I learned during that process too, is that not only are they background checked and they hold these types of badges that they get that are issued from the state, but if you're in a cultivation portion of that, that doesn't mean that you get access to the manufacturing. When you're in manufacturing, it doesn't mean that you get access to the cultivation. So these employees, and, and same thing with dispensaries, that you're not allowed, there's very strict standards to get a badge that allows you into the vault in the back of the dispensaries. So all of this is just again, to give you guys a flavor of just how highly regulated this space is and that it will continue to be with the comprehensive licenses. Again, it's highly regulated and much is at, at stake here. And the proposed edits to the code are necessary and they are to comport and comply with Amendment Three, which is still holding these facilities and these operators to the same standards and strict standards that were in place three years ago and that remain today. And I think Mr. Trimble and Ms. Wilson can echo me where I say, you know, where there's clarity in what they're attempting to do with this code, there's compliance. And this is something that our operators and our clients take super seriously. And so we just appreciate that what the county's doing here tonight is just being proactive on that 60 day mark to make sure that we remain in compliance with your code as well. So thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions.
Anyone? Thank you very-
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone I speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing none, we do not need rebuttal then. All those in favor of this petition? Let the record show seven. Those opposed are with concerns. Let the record show none. That concludes this, this hearing and we'll go to the last item, which is PC 40-22, San Luis County Planning Commission in this reference to car washes.
PC 40-22, St. Louis County Planning Commission is a request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to regulations for car wash facilities. The zoning ordinance does not currently contain definitions for car wash, vehicle washing or vehicle detailing. However, these uses are permitted in several of the zoning districts. Car washes and vehicle washing is a permitted use by right in the C3 and C4 commercial districts. It is permitted with a conditional use permit in the C2 and C7 commercial districts, and it is permitted through the C8 planned commercial district procedure. Auto detailing has been interpreted to be a form of vehicle service and is permitted by right in the C4 commercial district and with a conditional use permit in the C2, C3 and three, C7 commercial districts. It is permitted with a conditional use permit in the M2 industrial district and also through the C8 commercial district procedure. Here's a table of requests for car washes in unincorporated St. Louis County since 2015. The department is aware of an increase in requests for new car wash approvals through zoning procedures and through site plan review in the straight zone districts. Although car washes are a necessary and desired land use by the people of St. Louis County, it is appropriate to review the regulations surrounding car washes and vehicle detailing to ensure these uses are cited in a way that supports vibrant commercial corridors. This map shows the location of those car washes that have been approved since 2015. As you can see, the majority are located in South County in the sixth district. This is a map zoomed in on that sixth district area where they're concentrated between kind of Lemay Ferry and Lindbergh over to Telegraph Road. And as you can see, four of these car washes were approved this year. So to reiterate, the development and approval of car wash facilities has increased significantly in recent years. As the commission is charged with making recommendations with respect to planning and zoning matters, it is appropriate to review these regulations and recommend a regulatory environment to ensure appropriate sighting of these facilities. And I can answer any questions.
Questions, anyone? Speaking of none, I think we're good.
All right.
Anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing none, we do not need rebuttal, and we will wait for the staff's report. And with that, we'll take a show of hand of those in favor. Are those opposed? Let the record show none. And that concludes this hearing.
So Mr. Hilsinger, since we do not have a quorum this evening, staff will be presenting to you, but it's for informational purposes only, and we will at your next meeting in January for your decisions pertaining to PC 39-22.
Yeah, so you can see the executive session agenda on the screen, but I'm only going to go over PC 39-22 tonight informationally. So this is the text amendment regarding marijuana facilities in the zoning ordinance. The summary of our recommendation is that these uses need to be placed in the zoning ordinance, and it can be accomplished by amending the existing definitions that are in the zoning ordinance right now for the medical facilities, as well as adopting some new definitions and new regulations for additional facility types. We're also recommending that there be a locational buffer for medical... I'm going to say that. I haven't said that this whole time, but for marijuana dispensary facilities, we recommend that they be sighted 500 feet from each other and from packaged liquor stores, but I will get into that a little more detail down the presentation. The table on this slide shows the four facility types that are in the zoning ordinance today and which zoning districts they are permitted or conditional in. So as I mentioned during the public hearing portion, there is a new facility type, the microbusiness marijuana facility. The two types are the microbusiness dispensary facility and the wholesale facility. So the dispensary facility that the department has determined operates essentially the same as the typical marijuana dispensary. It's just scaled down in nature, but it's still, you know, is a dispensary open to the public. So we find that they can be permitted where the other marijuana dispensary facilities are permitted, which is the C2 and C3 Shopping District. And instead of adopting a definition for the microbusiness marijuana dispensary facility, specifically, we're recommending to amend the dispensary facility definition to encompass comprehensive and microbusiness marijuana dispensaries. For the microbusiness marijuana wholesale facility, it is a little bit more specific. As I mentioned, it's sort of a combination multi-use facility where the product can be cultivated and manufactured. It is similar to the indoor cultivation and to the indoor infused products manufacturing, but we recommend adopting a definition specifically for the use because it is sort of two-pronged in that way. However, we do find that it is appropriately cited similar to the indoor cultivation and manufacturing facilities in the M1 and the M2 Industrial District. We do recommend that both of these facility types need to meet the 1,000-foot buffer from places of worship, schools, and childcare centers. So as I mentioned earlier, there is a facility type called the marijuana transportation facility. The state did begin issuing licenses for this facility type in 2019 with the medical marijuana regulations. However, the county did not adopt a definition or regulations for this facility type. And as you saw on the map I showed earlier, there are a couple in unincorporated St. Louis County. So we do recommend adopting a definition for the facility type, permitting it in the M1 and the M2 Industrial Districts and the C7 General Extensive Commercial District. This is because for these uses, they often have a business vehicle, they're storing product on site. Therefore, we find it's appropriate in these three districts and not in the general shopping districts. And then regarding the dispensary facilities, the department does find that these uses could be clustering, and we have concerns about how and where these uses might cluster. For purposes of review, the commission may recall that the zoning ordinance permits packaged liquor facilities, packaged liquor stores, when located 1,000 feet from another packaged liquor facility. If the location does not meet that requirement, then the use becomes conditional, and the petitioner has to come before this commission to have the merits of their petition heard, and the commission is able to do that little extra layer of scrutiny and analysis to make sure these uses are cited appropriately. We find that similarly, it would be appropriate to have a buffer between dispensary facilities and between dispensary facilities and packaged liquor stores. So if the use meets the 1,000-foot buffer from the sensitive uses and the 500-foot buffer from another dispensary or packaged liquor store, we recommend it be permitted by right in the C2 and the C3 Shopping Districts. However, if they meet the 1,000-foot buffer, but do not meet the 500-foot from another dispensary facility or a packaged liquor store, we're recommending that use become conditional so that this commission can analyze it further. So this map, I have a couple maps that show the existing buffer, the 1,000-foot buffer from places of worship, childcare centers, and schools. So you can see that that buffer has a fairly significant impact on the commercial corridors. And then if you look, there's a blue buffer and a green buffer that represent where either an existing marijuana facility or an existing packaged liquor store is. So you can see there are a couple places where this requirement would require someone to seek a conditional use permit. So you can see here, this is the sixth district, the area by Tesson Ferry and Lindbergh. The sort of quadrant there becomes precluded by that requirement if it were instilled in the zoning ordinance, but then there are other areas outside where the use could be permitted by right. So our reading of the state's legislation, I mean, it clearly says that a locality can enact other ordinances or regulations regarding the manner and the location where marijuana is consumed in a public place, whether that's in public or in a designated facility. Our reading is that this could permit the county to permit what we would call marijuana consumption facilities, where product is bought and consumed outside of a private residence necessarily. We find that this use, we do not find that it could be permitted by right clearly, but that with a conditional use permit, it may be able to be permitted in the C2 and the C3 Shopping Districts. The other zoning ordinance regulations that would be affected by this change are the parking regulations. The new facilities would need a new parking requirement. So for a marijuana consumption facility, we find that the activity would be similar to that of a restaurant. So we are recommending one space for every three seats and two spaces for every three employees. With the microbusiness marijuana wholesale facility, we recommend giving it the same parking requirement as the other manufacturing uses. Currently, there is a limit on hours of operation for medical marijuana dispensaries. We're recommending that the commission recommend hours of operation for dispensary facilities as a whole, and as well applying that limitation on hours of operation to the marijuana consumption facilities. Last, we currently assess a $100 location verification fee. This allows the staff to review an application for location verification and do the analysis. We're recommending that that fee be increased to $200 to better correspond with the amount of time and resources it takes to complete that task. So in summary, this is a table that then shows all of the facility types and where we are recommending they be permitted or conditional. And then I have some slides that show in each section of the zoning ordinance what text we are proposing be amended, which I can run through. So here in the non-urban district, the use that's permitted is the outdoor cultivation facility is permitted with a CUP. We're recommending just striking the word "medical" from that use. Similar here in the KP, outdoor cultivation is a conditional use, and we're recommending striking the term "medical." In the C2, adding the buffer requirement for dispensaries to be sighted that distance from each other, adding consumption facilities and dispensary facilities when they don't meet the 500-foot buffer as conditional uses. Similar for the C3. In the C6, testing facilities are currently permitted. We're recommending striking "medical" from that term. In the C7, and that label is wrong, that's the General Extensive Commercial District, we're recommending that transportation facilities be permitted. And the M1, striking "medical" from the existing facilities that are permitted, and then adding the transportation facility and the microbusiness wholesale facility, similarly in the M2. And then here, adding the parking requirements and amending the formerly medical facilities and the parking requirement. And then this slide shows the proposed changes to the way we measure the locational verification or the locational buffer. So for the commission, the 1,000-foot buffer from a marijuana facility to a place of worship, school, or daycare is measured via the legally traversable footpath, the shortest legally traversable footpath, which can often, in the case of a facility right across, say, Telegraph Road from each other, your legally traversable footpath might not allow you to cross the street, you might have to go down to an intersection. That can cause on our major arterioles some longer traversable footpaths. So for the dispensary-to-dispensary measurement, we're recommending that 500-foot buffer just be measured shortest distance A to B as a crow flies. I am happy to take any questions, but as Jacob said, the commission will be able to take action tonight.
Anyone have a question? Thank you very much.
So I will do this again in January.
Well, we may give a truncated version.
It was a dress rehearsal.
We need to have water up there.
I meant to bring my water down, and I didn't.
It's like you're struggling up there, down there. So, yeah. And if the commission has any questions between now and please do let us know, because we want to, what we bring to you in January, we would hope that even...
Get an answer?
Yes.
Yes, so, right. So if there are any questions for us, or if there are any questions that are maybe more legal in nature, we do have our representatives from the county councilor's office who could take those questions with them.
Absolutely.
I do have one question. It's not about locations. It's about something that gambling came into area years and years ago. And then following up with that, the facilities asked the people if they got themselves in trouble gambling too much, that they would be, you know, bar themselves from the gambling association. Was any of that in legislation through the state?
The legislation does have some language about marijuana convictions, and I, you know, I don't want to speak out of term, but I believe if you have a conviction, you can petition for that form of conviction to be addressed. I don't know if that answers your question fully.
I'm not talking about a conviction. I'm talking about if somebody's...
If they have it.
Smoking too much, and they go, okay, I've got a...
Not that I'd seen.
Okay. That's all.
Just wondering if we should have a 1,000-foot buffer between these and communication towers for washes? That way, they don't get high and try to climb the tower, or they forget to roll the windows up when they're going through the car wash, you run the risk of drowning.
Is that a motion?
I'm wondering, man. It's just throwing it out there for consumption.
We'll think on that one.
And I had another...
Snap a look into that.
Have any提议 proposed for mobile consumption? Kind of like the food vendors?
No, no, not at this time.
So, right. The state does not permit, like, the outdoor sale of, like, you can't, they, the sale will be largely highly regulated in their facilities.
And a lot, because there are a lot of rules right now about how you basically shouldn't be able to see the product from outside, like, you shouldn't be able to look in the window to be able to see the product. So I think there would be a lot of difficulty regulating time.
If they erected a tent and had the consumption trailer in front of it, then they wouldn't technically be outside.
And one of the things I want to, you know, just to informally discuss with the commission is, is we bring forward the idea of the consumption facility, not knowing exactly what it's going to look like. We just know these are popping up in other jurisdictions. So there are stories, I mean, just...
Just a few in Illinois.
There's several in Illinois that have popped up where it's essentially almost like a restaurant, where folks go in. We just suspect that there's a high likelihood that over time, that these may pop up in St. Louis County, and we want to be ready for if and when, you know, such a use pops up. But we don't yet exactly know what it will look like. But that's where we believe that the conditional use permit procedure would grant the commission the ability to utilize the four-prong test of all conditional use permits to assure that the sighting of the use is appropriate and protects the general welfare of our residents.
Okay. Very good. Gary?
I never in my lifetime thought that we'd be having this conversation about smoking pot and having consumption centers and so forth.
We were just over here talking about that, yeah. I don't know.
Guess I'm showing my age.
Yeah, I am.
I will make a comment.
Yep.
Well, they realize there's some danger because they don't want to mix them with alcohol. If it's that good for you, what's the difference in, you know, having a bottle of Boone's Farm wine and a...
We can only address the land use considerations. These other questions are outside of my expertise, so.
But thought provoking.
So, so again, please, if you have any questions, please let, just message Mel or message me so that we can be insured and be ready to, whatever comes before you in January is ready for action.
You're talking about legitimate questions, correct?
Yes, preferably.
So then, for 2023, we are working on the January public notice, so you will be hearing from Evelyn with that. We're proposing that it be on January the ninth. That'll be our first meeting of 2023.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone who's in the room. Happy New Year. Hope everyone has a safe and happy holiday, so.
What's that?
Oh, your badge?
Yes.
To get a new one?
Yeah.
I will combine it.
We'll chat with Mel.